I'd like to call the meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Canton Township Board of Trustees, on June 8th, 2021, at 6:02 PM. Clerk Seagrest, can you please call the roll?
Borninski.
I am here. Good and good evening from my home in Canton Township.
Foster.
Good evening from my home in Canton Township.
Danguli.
Hello, good evening, I'm here at my home in Canton Township.
Let the record be... Graham Hudek.
Good evening, I'm here in Canton Township Hall.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seagrest is in attendance, and he is in Lillona County. The Treasurer Slavens.
A good evening from Canton Township.
Anne Snyderman.
I am here in Canton Township.
Thank you, and the next item is the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Can I have an emotion to adopt the agenda with three add-ons? One of them will be a resolution on Juneteenth. The other one will be an add-on of G0A for, sorry. G0A, request to purchase voter precinct laptop replacements. And G0B, request for resolution of local body of government to recognize partnership with arts and humanities as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application charitable gaming license to the Bureau of State Lottery.
So moved.
Support. Thank you, Clerk Seagrest, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Danguli.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrest, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Anne Snyderman.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone under the attendees for public comment? You can raise your hand via Zoom or hit star six. I see one hand here. Jasmine Lee, I'm going to... Hello Jasmine, can you please state your name and where you're from? And then you have three minutes.
Yes, hi team, my name is Jasmine Lee, I hope you can hear me. I know many of you, I'm a Canton Library trustee and also on the Canton Community Foundation. I appreciate your time today, I want to be respectful and I understand it's only three minutes. But I wanted to express my appreciation based off of the last meeting minutes held on May 25th, that the township declared May as an official Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Speaking as an Asian American and also, you know, I guess a community member to serve Canton, it makes me very proud that Canton Township has recognized this official month. And I come from Ohio, I went to school at Ohio State, it's a very diverse school, and we always honored May as Asian Awareness Month, so I'm very happy that it's local here and that the leadership here recognizes it. And then secondly, I'd like to make a comment about the waste collection services here. Unfortunately, I think we're experiencing a lot of issues lately. I've been in touch with Canton Public Works. I know that there's been a pattern of missed waste collection, I'm sure you guys are aware of it, but it's very concerning. I have documentation here that's dated back to June 9th of 2020 last year. And guys, I'm a data person, sorry, I'm a data person, but I have all the dates, I have all the communications, all the tickets, and it's just clearly becoming a pattern. And it's not a reflection of the recycling team. Those guys are fantastic, those guys are on time, timely, very respectful. It's just the waste collection management team that has become problematic and not just to my neighbor first, but multiple communities throughout Canton. So I'm hoping that the leadership team can recognize that and maybe investigate that further. I myself, as a Canton resident, I'm concerned about any type of multi-year agreement we have with the current waste services provider. You know, like what year are we in it? I don't know if this is like a FOIA that I need to submit for official information, but clearly they're in breach and violation of ordinances within the township and also key performance metrics. I would hope that the contract we currently have with this company, that that's being discussed. I mean, that would be my hope as a resident. And then thirdly, I just wanted to mention about this like water bill payment service. I think I've been in touch with Diane, bless your heart Diane. Yeah, so I sent her like this really long email and Annery, you're on it too. But I was just curious about, you know, how many people and the outreach for this automatic payment program that's available to Canton residents? And I guess I was curious if that's being pushed, because I myself, I'm not a technical person, but you know, I was unaware of this process and I've mailed my voided check to the township, right? To get that process rolling, but on the phone with, I think, the water bill payment staff, I could just hear how stressed out they were, right? Because they were calling to collect delinquencies. And then my mind started wandering about maybe fees that we could avoid. Like, I got a delinquent notice because I paid my water bill late. But you know, can we avoid processing fees like postage and mailings and things like that to circumvent, right? That would offset and be favorable for the township, okay? These are just thoughts, right, and suggestions. And then I also thought in my mind, because I'm a library trustee, you know, is there historical data that the township has for revenue collected for late payment and fees charges, right? So these are just some of these things that are on my mind. I wanted to express to you as a resident of Canton, I love my community, I'm so proud to be a part of it. And I, sorry, I probably ran over my three minutes here, but I appreciate all of your time and I respect all of you. Thank you.
Thank you Jasmine. Anyone else? Anyone else, I'm looking again to see if anyone else wants to talk? Let me see, we have someone here. Named Michael. Okay, Michael, please state your name, where you're from, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Michael, I'm from Canton Township. I'd like to piggyback off of what you had said about recycling. I know it's been like a more push and more things can be recycled now, but something still can't. Something that I need to be considered are, you know, when you recycle type of plastics, they can only be recycled once or twice, and then they need to go to landfill, so. You know, I think it's gonna be like a city and a state and national type of thing, but to bring back the mailman, I mean, the milkman type of model where things are brought and then things are brought back, so that waste isn't produced that way. I also think the budget could be changed a little bit differently. 911 services are probably the most important thing, I think that should be increased. There isn't need to be as much money in the golf course. And also, I don't think there needs to be two mobile command centers. Canton's a very safe place. I think we all know that, and it's because we have a great community and people have their needs met. If someone does, I think that they should be helped out with that. I know the city does a little bit, but that could be increased as well. I also think something with the recycling could be like for food scraps as well, for compost. That way, things don't make it to the landfill and it's able to be made into soil for gardens or things like that, for landscaping. I was also curious about, I see there's an incinerator at the landfill, I was wondering if any plastics were being incinerated. I would not like to see that, because that's harmful to, people in the surrounding area have to breathe in that, and I don't think that should be the case. Could I get some, could I get confirmation that that's not happening?
Yes, if you want, if you want, no, I know you did not state your address or anything. If you want, you can state your address, or you can call the office in the morning and we can get you information.
Okay, I'll call the office in the morning, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? So just to let you know Jasmine, you did, just to let everybody know, Jasmine did send a letter with some of her questions to Diane and I, so we will be responding to that. And along, also just to add to this, that we have had a lot of phone calls and emails about GFL. So we just, we have GFL on the line here, because we've had a lot of residents call, we've had to call GFL back, and Jade and GFL are just going to give a statement about what's going on with the garbage, because we are having a lot of issues. So would you like me to promote him?
Yes, please, Sam Kerr Magno from GFL is on, he's one of the participants or one of the attendees.
Not Nick Allen then?
Sam.
Okay, there's...
That's Kerr Mango.
Okay, okay, there it is, okay, all right. Okay Jade, want to introduce what your statement is?
Yeah, I've been in constant contact with GFL over the course of the last couple of days in regards to some of the delay in service since last week. They've been communicating back to us, but Sam is the representative from GFL today that can answer any questions from the board and also shed some light on some of the recent hurdles that they're experiencing. So Sam, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, hello everyone, board members, Jade. Yes, we are experiencing some problems that stemmed from last week on the holiday week, where of course, we didn't work Monday and then we worked Tuesday through Saturday. That generates eight days worth of trash and we fell upon an issue where we could not get done before the end of the week. That issue has then transpired into this early part of the week, this following, and primarily due to some staffing problems and the carryover from the weekend that we just couldn't get done. So we're working hard at getting back on track here. To be completely honest with you, it may take us until Saturday to get everything done and complete in proper fashion, but we be assured we are working hard toward that goal. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay, well, just to let you know Sam, I mean, I know you're talking about this, we've been getting calls a lot more over this week, but we've been getting them for a couple of months now. So can you tell us what's going on with streets that are skipped and...
The staffing issues are probably the leading contributing issue to our problems at this time. As you're aware, there's staffing issues everywhere and we're certainly not not free from that as well. We have made some considerable changes in our wages, in our recruiting, to generate the type of workforce we need for the summer. There's challenges with that, I must say. But again, we're doing all that we can on a daily basis with recruiting, raising our staffing wage level. We, for instance, we've raised our wages close to $4 an hour for all of our residential employees, which is a considerable step to attract and keep them during this difficult time.
All right, another complaint we're getting in the emails is that we are, when people call GFL, they aren't getting responses or answers, or anyone picking up the phone, what is going on there?
That's similar situation with the COVID situation. We had a breakout at their call center and we had a lot of people that were off work, so we transferred a lot of calls to our call center up north, and that was a little bit of relief. Massive hiring, recruiting, training, that problem should be resolved, or at least on the downswing right now, and back to something that's more reasonable.
I don't know of any other board members, if you're getting calls or emails like we are here, but do you have any questions for GFL based on what we're hearing here in the office? Kate?
Yeah, so my neighborhood experienced issues over the last week because of the, I guess, the problems associated with the holiday. One question I have is, so for example, my neighborhood's pickup is Thursday, so then because of the holiday, we were expecting Friday. And then we waited quite a bit of the day on Saturday, but eventually it was picked up, which we're really grateful for. But wondering, how do we contact GFL on the weekend in these kind of cases? When the normal day, you know, isn't picked up and then it's a day late also? So like, if you were a Friday pickup, you would have been Saturday, but then there aren't any, it doesn't seem like there are any hours that the phone is answered at GFL on the weekend. So what can residents do to get into contact with GFL?
Our call center does have early Saturday hours, probably not sufficient enough, because we are working 7, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night in some cases. I can make the route manager's cellphone available to the DPS folks. And again, I know they're not there on Saturday, but I can make that available and he can be reached, you know, anytime the trucks are on the road and working.
So what are the normal hours? Because I did try to call Saturday morning around 9:00, maybe that was too late, but nobody answered.
That phone call should have been answered. 9 o'clock you tried?
It might have been like 9:10, but it was close to 9:00.
Okay, let me come over that.
I also submitted a ticket through your website, which I will have to say, it was very difficult to figure out how to do that. It was kind of buried, and so I'm wondering if there's a way to make that more accessible? And then my last question is, what is the management at GFL doing when you're having these staffing issues? Are you substituting or anything like that to help out?
Well, I'm part of the management team here, we are definitely doing whatever and all that we can. We've got, we've got anybody that can drive the truck, anybody that can work on the back of the truck, including people from the shop as well that go out and work when we're shorthanded. The fact of the matter is, again, it's a very challenging environment for staffing right now, not only for us, but for everyone in business right now. So we are hiring, we did a half dozen interviews again today, driver interviews, loader interviews. The loaders, the wage for loaders is over $15 an hour, that's the helper for the back of the truck. The wage for the driver is 20, to start, $22 an hour. So I hope people are listening on this call today, and if they know someone looking for work that's qualified, by all means, we are very, very interested in them, they can have immediate interviews in our Van Borne location.
So where do residents call if they haven't had their garbage picked up in a few days? It's like two or three, or one or two, three, four days past?
They would call our call center, and then the call center creates a ticket, electronic ticket that gets sent to the route manager, and the route manager will follow up on that.
Some of the emails that we're seeing are saying that, you know, they're trying those, they still aren't getting... So I mean, basically, we're kind of going in a loop here. We're getting a lot of calls and emails and we're having to call you guys and...
I would expect by the end of this week, we'll have this problem straightened out. Before the end of this week, we'll have this problem straightened out, then those calls will drop, though we don't need to make the call, because we'll be back on schedule.
Okay, Summer?
A quick comment and then a question. I also had my trash delay last week. It was supposed to be picked up on Tuesdays, our normal day, it did not come on Thursday, but they did come on Friday evening and pick it up. But my question is, how many additional people do you need to hire? And are those folks in the pipeline to be brought on beginning next week to make sure that we don't have these issues again?
There are people in the pipeline, there are people in the pipeline, anywhere from interviewing to drug testing, to background checks, to physicals, to starting an orientation. So we've got a number of people in the system that are going through our internal process to become hired and qualified to drive these trucks. That exact number right now, I've got Bill here with me, Bill. 14 folks that are in the system right now that are going through that process. Again, when we, when you're behind and as we are, it makes it difficult to catch up, because you'll need more people. We really have the staff to keep up, once we get caught back up.
Okay, and you know, I would urge you to do more to make sure that you're responsive to residents' concerns, especially when they are trying to get in touch with you when they are not getting their trash picked up. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what more you can do, but I would urge you to figure out a way to be more responsive.
Okay, I'll make it know that, thank you.
If I can make a quick, I'm sorry. I did talk with Sam earlier today, we're going to talk again tomorrow morning and come up with some more communication processes that we have, so that especially when things do happen over the weekend, we can get things out on social media, even if they are experiencing issues within their operations, we can find a better way to communicate out to the residents and to the community.
Thank you, Tanya?
Yeah, so I, so this issue is not just this week, it's like two weeks ago, in a board meeting, one of the residents made a public comment about this issue. And she was a, she called multiple times at the GFL, her trash was supposed to be picked up on Tuesday and till Friday it did not pick up. She somehow found my home phone number and literally called me at my home and I contacted Jade and Mary and then Amy and they made sure that the trash got picked up on Friday, because she said I was, I'm having an event on Saturday in my house and there was a trash sitting there for, like, four days in the hot 90-degree weather. So my concerns are, my question is same as Summer's is, have you, you know, you think you can resolve the low, you know, your scarcity of workers in your facility by next week? You think you will be up to, you'll be picking up and be at a normal pace by next week?
Yes, I do. Memorial Weekend is almost the pinnacle of the trash volume for the year. There's only, the only other year that rivals this would be after Christmas time, far as volume goes and the need to put trucks on the street. This is almost a perfect storm when you get this eight-day collection after the holiday. You have people that are home, activity, grass cutting, flower planting, cleaning out the garages and so on and so forth. Every year, this Memorial Week, following Memorial Week is a very, very high activity week. So between catching up this week and then you'll see a steady decline in volume after this week. The trend will be a steady decline for the rest of the summer.
I also have a question for Jade, you just mentioned something about the social media, you know, putting things out on social media, but that's a one-way communication. If people are not able to reach, you know, the call center and not able to get in touch, what do they do? Do they, can they go and...
Yeah, I can't, I can't... Yeah, I can't speak on behalf of the township's Facebook page, but on the MSD page, it's not a one-way communication. We do monitor those, and I do, every time we get a comment on the MSD page, that comes right to my phone and I do see those. And we have...
So that residents are aware that if they cannot get in touch, they can at least go to the Canton MSD page and...
Yeah, we had an incident a couple of weeks ago where there was actually somebody that called, and I believe, I know Nick is on the phone from GFL as well, and we sent somebody out like late, late Friday night to pick up some trash that was missed. So we do monitor that, we do see that, there's multiple people on there that are monitoring that page.
Okay, thank you.
Kate?
Let Diane go first, because she hasn't had a chance yet.
Oh, sorry, go ahead Diane.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I know a lot of the staff has been giving calls and emails regarding this. Have you hired more people to answer the phones? Because that's one of the biggest things that I hear is people can't seem to get through when they call. And, you know, they know they're not going to get, the trash isn't going to get picked up that day, and they know it won't be for two days, they can put the trash back out two days later. It just seems like, you know, the phones, along with picking up the trash, but the phones need to be answered. And I don't know if you're having an issue hiring or if you've already hired.
Yes, we've had, we've had an issue with hiring call center staff as well. It's almost a universal problem getting people to come to work right now and taking these jobs. But yes, we have hired, I know they had 13 people in the same process and the same pipeline just last week. What that number is today, I don't know how many of those stuck and came on board, but there was 13 last week, and they've got to go through a training process as well. What we have is, we have a, we have a book with each community and the outline of their program in the book that kind of helps them through their training process, so they can answer the phone relatively quickly and answer a question, whether you're a carted community or whether you're a five-day-a-week community, four-day-a-week community, whatever it happens to be. So that helps them with their training, it's almost a reference page. But yes, we're continually hiring as well in our customer service center, yes.
Kate?
So a couple of follow-up questions. You told trustee Foster and answered her question about hiring, that you had 14 people in the pipeline. Is, are those 14 people for Canton exclusively, or are they throughout the metro area?
That's a good question, those 14 people are for our Wayne location on Wayne Road, on Van Borne Road in Wayne, on Hanan Road, and that's not 14 for Canton. We don't need 14 for Canton, we probably need two, maybe three for Canton, and that could be part of that group that's onboarding now.
Okay, and then I also want to commend Director Smith and his team, because I felt like the Facebook messages that you did put out there were very informative and helped me personally understand the situation that was going on when I couldn't get through to GFL. And then follow-up to my question about having substitutes and, you know, taking people from other areas of the company and having them do the jobs if you don't have enough staff. Are you doing that?
Yes, we have substitute drivers. Again, the last week is an incredible volume week, but we do have substitute drivers, and we have absentees and problems with COVID and this heat, of course, that we're experiencing early in the summer. But yes, we have absentee drivers and we use them, we sort of use every one of them. And we just need it, we need a handful more, and that's why we continue to hire and recruit folks for these jobs.
Okay, but if you don't have enough people doing the, you know, out on routes, what do you do? And you don't have enough, and you don't have enough people filling in, do you take people from the office and use them? What do you do in that case?
If they're qualified to drive, for instance, lead drivers that help for supervisory purposes, we'll take them out of supervisory positions, you know, if they help as an assistant, they'll go and drive a truck or work on the back of the truck, absolutely. And that's, that's why we're behind, because we were not able to fill all the seats last week, and we're catching up and correcting that now. And we're using everybody we can that's available to do these jobs.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, Stephen?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Couple of questions, good to hear that you'll be bringing some people on. I'm looking forward to the end of this week and next week improving, so I'm sure we'll get reports from Director Smith. I don't know if this is a question for you Jade or Director Trumble, but does our contract have any service level agreement in it? And if so, are there any penalties associated with it? I don't remember that to be the case, but I don't know. I don't remember that to be the case, but I don't know. Either way, and I don't need an answer right now if you guys don't know.
I mean, I can comment that there's an overall service level expectation spelled out in it, but I don't know that there's a quantifiable expectation. But I, and I, and I say that because I have to familiarize myself with the, with the contract.
Okay, if you guys have any more details on that afterwards, I'd be interested in it. And if there are any penalties associated with it. That being said, we need to fix this and I am, just like everyone else, really eager to get it fixed as not just a trustee, but as a resident. But I will also say that this is probably a conversation that's going on on Zoom or in-person board meetings across the state right now between trash providers and communities. Because I, there are several Facebook pages of different communities that I'm a part of that I watch and the community where my family and I like to spend some time up north is going through the same exact conversations with their providers right now. And it's not green for life. It's not GFL. So I don't think there's another provider that isn't running into these issues right now. And as also was mentioned, this is not the only industry that is having these issues. Doesn't mean we don't have to get them under control and figure it out. And I'm glad to hear that you've raised your salary wages levels and are attracting people. I think that's probably what it's going to take, at least in the short term, for not just the trash industry, but also retail and food and other places. So I, I'm, I'm not confident that there's, there's a provider out there that hasn't had issues like this in the communities that they're in and probably across the country, but definitely across the state of Michigan right now. So that's what I'll say.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Summer?
I do have one more question. At the beginning of a shift, you probably know that you don't have enough folks coming on to complete the route. So is there any attempt to let the township know at that time that a route may not be completed so that we can let residents know?
There, you're, you're absolutely right. In the morning, we certainly know if we're going to be shorthanded. We're, we're optimistic in hopes that we can get things done. But I think you're correct. If, if we shared that information that there's a potential that we wouldn't finish without setting up alarms, sometimes when we don't need to, it'd probably beneficial and we'll, we'll look at that and try to get that communication polished up a bit because that's a good point.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Thank you. And is it on top of whatever? Go ahead, Michael. Sorry.
Sorry, I think because of my internet connection, there might be a bit of a delay. And so hopefully you'll all keep that in mind as we go through the motions tonight as well. Hopefully I'm clear. I will be clear and I will be concise. I just want to read everything that trustee Foster just said at the last part. I think we definitely can be proactive about any type of service delays that are contingent upon staffing issues. And, and we can be a partner in, in helping manage expectations for people about reasonable service delays.
Yes, thank you. And as everyone has said, you know, it's really important. One of the things we're seeing is people are talking about communication. Communication, as Summer and Michael just said, is very key. So if you see that you have shortage of staff or you are even in the middle of a route and you see something is missed that you can't get to, if you could please get ahold of Jade and DPW. As you can see, they're communicating with residents via Facebook and we can get it out there right away. Versus us getting all the calls we've been barraged with and like, I know you've been barraged with. We know that there's a shortage of people out there for working. I mean, we've seen it as Steven said. We've, we're seeing it across Michigan. We're seeing it in, in our own township. We're hiring part-time. So please, communication is really key. Be very proactive and call us so we can get it out there. As soon as we get things out there, people seem to understand a little bit more. But just silence doesn't help, doesn't help, doesn't help you, doesn't help any of us.
No, we understand that, that's something we'll work on going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, let me see. So we do have, just let everybody know, there's another, I'm not going to go through a public comment with the same people, but we do have another public comment at the end also. So I will just continue with the agenda. Okay, the next agenda item is payment of bills. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Actually, did, did we do approval of minutes?
We did. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry.
We did not.
We did not. Okay, can I have a motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes. Twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Clark Seagres, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Warreninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Enguli.
Hi.
Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres, hi. Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Motion passes. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I am making a motion to pay the bills.
Support. Thank you. Clark Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Warreninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Enguli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres, hi. Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Jade Smith, Director, Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Jade, did you need anyone?
Uh, yeah, if you wanted to promote Christine Ross as well, she is actually an intern for the township, working in the planning department right now. And the presentation that they're going to walk you through, she actually helped develop. But I'm going to actually turn this over to Patrick Sloan. And before he gets started, I'll just say that he's going to go through an opportunity for the township to pursue a certification through the state of Michigan. That'll help us in the future become certified for when we are ready for redevelopment, not just development. I've been involved in the, in the RRC program in other communities. Patrick's very familiar with it and actually so is our intern. She came to us with some experience. So I'm going to turn it over to Patrick and Christine to actually go through a presentation. Patrick will need to share his screen and we'll try and keep it as short as possible so we can stay on track with the meetings and others are hearing at seven o'clock as well. So Patrick, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, thanks Jade. I have my screen up. Share it. I hope everybody can see it. And the presentation will walk through the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation or the MEDC. So throughout this presentation, you'll hear RRC for Redevelopment Ready Communities and MEDC for Michigan Economic Development Corporation. As Jade had noted, Christine Ross has been interning with the Planning Division, starting in May. And she has previous experience working with another community, helping them with their certification process. So she comes to us with some experience in redevelopment ready communities. And we've started to do some preliminary analysis and we're a little bit ahead of the game as a result. First question is, what is RRC? It's a voluntary, a voluntary no-cost statewide certification program that's established to help promote and support communities. It helps them to plan, to identify and engage stakeholders and to plan for the future. It's also a tool to help attract new businesses and residents through a community-driven development process. It also is a opportunity for communities to try to streamline their development review procedures. And also for communities to have continuous updates to maintain their certification. So very broadly, that's some of the background. We'll get into some of the best practices and how the process will go. The first step in getting started with RRC is to complete the online training modules. Both Christine and I have, have done those modules. The next step is a resolution of intent to be approved by the Board of Trustees to attain approval to place the township in the program. Once the township is in the program, there's an RRC planner that will evaluate the township's existing documents and create a baseline report. The RRC planner assigned to Canton would set up a Trello board where we would submit documents, we would keep track of everything and then we would get feedback. So it'd be a way of continually communicating with our designated RRC planner. And then finally, the last step is to submit a resolution by the Board of Trustees to proceed to attain approval, to proceed with the certification process. So there would be another opportunity for the Board of Trustees to decide at that time if it wanted to continue with the certification process. So by adopting a resolution this evening, it doesn't bind the township to have to do anything in the future. Communities can leave the program at any time. The MEDC process also opens the township up to a number of resources. The RRC planner and community assistance team members are here to help us throughout the process. They set up a board, a Trello board to attain feedback and give us assistance. There's a lot of additional free online training. There's an online library full of examples of approved documents from other communities so that we can look at best practices to see which ones would best fit Canton. And finally, there's technical assistance, match funding. MEDC can offer funding to assist communities in completing different tasks. And all of these available resources come at no cost to the township and are available through the state. I'll go through some of the best practices briefly. I know we're up against time. The first best practice is for plans and engagement. RRC evaluates the community planning and how the community's redevelopment vision is embedded in the master plan. It assesses also how a community identifies its stakeholders and engages them on a continual basis. So some of the necessary RRC items are updates to the master plan, the CIP, a downtown or corridor plan, and a creative public participation plan. The township has a master plan, a CIP, and a downtown plan. We would just have to work on developing a public participation plan. The next best practice is zoning, and that's basically adopting zoning regulations that align with the community's visions. The state doesn't really mandate what you must do for zoning, but your zoning has to align with your master plan. It also has to be accessible and user-friendly. It has to prioritize development in a concentrated area. And the township does this in many areas of the township where there's development in a concentrated area. For example, Cherry Hill Village. It wants to make sure you're ensuring housing diversity and the township has a number of different housing options. So we would look to improve on what we already have. And then also things like design best practices, parking flexibility, green infrastructure. The third best practice is development review. Some of the necessary items are to have conceptual review meetings to establish an internal review process. That's a state best practice, but that's something the township has been doing for many years. So part of the RRC process is the township informing the state of its current procedures to see how we can better advertise those and when necessary, how we can improve those. We also have a fee schedule that's accessible. We have a way of tracking projects and also planning for continued improvement. So again, many of the necessary RRC items are things that we currently do, but we do want to look for ways to improve and provide better services. The fourth best practice deals with boards and commissions. It starts with having a recruitment process with a list of expectation and interests for potential members, such as for people on the Planning Commission or Zoning Board of Appeals or DDA, including having an orientation packet for new members. Will want to create or update any bylaws, especially ones that are out of date. Establishing an annual report, which is something that we currently do with the Planning Commission, but we would look to enhance that through the best practices. And finally, it promotes creating a training strategy for members and holding and attending joint meetings. The fifth best practice is economic development and marketing, where the community looks at its overall township marketing strategy for economic development. And so it starts with the master plan and it comes into this best practice where we've done the master plan, public participation, zoning boards. Now we're looking at our overall economic development strategy on those foundations. And we look at what kind of incentives the township may have and what kind of marketing plan the township would like to have. The sixth and final best practice is to have priority redevelopment sites, where the community identifies specific sites in the community where it wants to see redevelopment. These can be privately owned or publicly owned sites. And what the state would help us with is to help us to promote the site, to list resources for developers, to help market the properties and provide any assistance that the township may be eligible, eligible to receive to make the site easier for redevelopment. Some of the benefits to the certification are, it would streamline the development process. We may, in many areas, we have a pretty streamlined process, but where there are ways to improve the process, we will, we'll look for those and try to implement those where they fit with the township's vision. The benefits are to make any web-based development activity more user-friendly. Also increase public participation and input. We're interested to hear from the state how we can improve our public participation process throughout the whole development review process. The MEDC also offers additional support for state grants and networking connections for communities that are certified. And it also is a good promotional tool to signal the residents, stakeholders and developers that Canton Township is well-prepared and well-equipped for redevelopment. The final slide here is just to go through some timelines. So the first step would be for the board to adopt a resolution of intent to initiate the process of the program. We would submit information to MEDC to give the community a baseline report. This can take up to six months. We have a lot of data and a lot of feedback that we're looking forward to having. That would take about six months to do. After that process, the board would have an opportunity to draft and pass a resolution to proceed into the program. And it would have to be done within thirty days after receiving the baseline report. But we expect throughout that process of the baseline report, we'll be continually communicating with the state. So we'll be ready if and when that time comes. And finally, the last step is achieving certification. And depending on the needs of the community, the process could be longer or shorter just depending on what comes out of the baseline report and the work the community has ahead of it. And finally, it looks at manageable quarterly goals throughout the baseline report so that we have measurables as time goes on. And the overall estimated time commitment would be under three years. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you for considering the resolution and we'll be happy to take any questions.
I guess a couple of comments too before we take any questions is when Patrick and I were discussing this and we looked at the strategies and the action items from the board that were recently set. There's a lot of things within this program and being certified will actually meet the board's goals. So that, that all kind of works together. This, this program's been around for quite a few years. And I believe that there's only about fifty communities, if I, if my recollection is correct, only about fifty communities within the state that are actually certified as an RRC community.
No, thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Jade. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the board? Tanya?
Yeah, I was looking at the details of this that you sent us in the board packet of all the communities that have, that are being in the process of being certified. And I see that, you know, a lot of communities around us are in the process of being certified. So was this not like, is this something you had decided to do earlier? Or is this something you decide, what, what made you come to this decision to apply for the certification process? I think it's a great thing to do. I just sent this. I, I was curious about.
Yeah, I, I can make a quick comment on that. I'm not sure that it was just a priority of maybe staff prior. And because the, the program has been around and Patrick and I were both familiar with it, that it made sense for us to proceed. And as we talked, you know, about, especially with an MSD and you're looking at building and planning and, and seeing that there is an end in sight of our growth period and that we will be looking at redevelopment sites, that it made sense at this particular time to, to really get this certification, work much closely with, much more closely with the state so that we're ready when some of the sites become available. You know, it, it's interesting too, over the last year and seeing what's happening because of the results of COVID. You know, we're seeing some empty storefronts, which obviously those are going to be now redevelopment sites as opposed to development sites. So there are a lot of best practices that come along with this, which actually are very timely for us to adopt at this point. I don't know, Patrick, if you have anything more to, to add to that?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, I think that's exactly right where sometimes there's discussion about. when the township builds out as build-out continues to go westward. But we have just as many redevelopment proposals and infill proposals as we do, new proposals as we're building out westward. So the infill development and redevelopment can often be more challenging when you're trying to retrofit a site. And in doing so, we want to look at everything and be able to give the community every advantage to be able to be successful with redevelopment sites, promote redevelopment sites that fulfill the community's vision and help both the economy and the quality of life of the community going forward.
I got a quick follow-up question about the timeline. It says that it could be anywhere from one to three years to get certified. So since we already have the CIP and the master plan in place, are we thinking it will be on the shorter side of things like? What are you realistically expecting for this to be completed?
Yeah. So the reason that they give you such a long timeline is because this is really a community-based, like you, you actually control the pace in which you go on. So you do your self-analysis, you work with the MEDC, and you fulfill these quarterly reports. And then it's really on the, on the community to keep that progression moving forward. That's just a typical timeline that they have. And Patrick, I would think that we would be closer to the one-year mark. I would, I mean, I would think we'd make that as a goal, a year, year and a half, as opposed to the three-year mark. Because we do have a lot of best practices in place. And now, obviously, it depends on when we do the baseline report or when we do our survey, send it to the state and they return us our baseline report. That'll show where we have growth opportunity and some changes that we can adopt. And then from there, we'll say, okay, we now have this many items that we need to check off. And from that, we can put together a better timeline. But I would say we'd be on the shorter end than the longer end.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, it looks like you have a hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Because of my delay, I will be raising my hand through the application, just so I don't have a weird timing issue with another trustee by just jumping into the conversation, if that's appropriate. My question is, to Jade, obviously, you know, I've got a bug in my, my brain about this corridor improvement plan. And I see that they mentioned corridor improvement authorities under one of the best practices in there. But it talks about kind of like reevaluating the plan. What would happen if a community, let's say, didn't have a DDA or didn't have a corridor improvement authority, but they were potentially going to start that process while they were starting this certification process? Do you have any idea how that would fit in? Would potentially the planner from the certification, you know, that person, would they be an asset? Would that be something that would fit into the, that six kind of item about kind of moving forward or continuing development? What, how would that fit?
So it's not a requirement that you have to have, Patrick, you may have to jump in here and correct me. I don't think it's a requirement to have a CIP, a corridor improvement authority, but most of the communities that go through this RRC have a DDA. RRC works very closely with the Main Street Program, which is also tied to communities that have a traditional downtown. And they work very closely with them on that. But if there was a change or an implementation to an existing plan, it would just become part of this process, which also then becomes part of your master plan process as well. It would just be submitted along with more tools in our toolbox, really, as proof that we're ready for redevelopment. If that makes sense. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Anyone else? Kate?
Sorry, it takes me a little while to unmute because of my mouse hand with the cast on it. So I just have more of a comment. That the first question that popped into my head was, how is this going to work with our bold board goals? And you already kind of addressed that, Jade, so I appreciate that. Do you have anything else to add to that? Like how, you know, my, my concern would be that we're taking on too much at once with our board goals and this. And so if we can get an idea of like how much they overlap, I think that would be great.
I could go through and probably try and mirror up and say which ones are addressed specifically. But I think when you start talking about welcoming communities, and I know we were talking more about residents and things like that, and making sure that everybody's welcome well. Part of being a welcoming community is making sure that you're a developed community and that you're a redeveloped community. So you could probably take every single board action item and tie it into this in some way, shape, or form. The master plan is obviously spelled out in the goal. We're, we're already doing it. We're already in the process. And it, it's, it looks like it's very, very task-oriented. And, and I'm not gonna lie, there's a lot that goes into this, but we also, it looks like I'm, can you guys hear me? I just got a signal on my computer, said my internet was unstable. That we do have Christine on the phone, or on the call tonight, who is an intern. And so we're going to utilize some of those resources as well that we brought in. So we have the resources to get this done, and I don't think that this will interfere with us progressing through the board action items either.
And I also think that the township has a, I think we want to start the master plan process sometime this year. And I think engaging with RRC now would be the perfect time because there's a lot of things that we'll look at the master plan as we see them as things that we need to update. And there's going to be a lot there. But then there may be some things from a statewide perspective where the RRC planner looks at it. It may have some additional best practices, especially if we communicate some of the board's goals to RRC. They might be able to find some best practices throughout the state that could fit really well for us. So I think the timing is good for us to be updating the master plan and also this process to make sure that we get the best product.
I, I think it sounds like a great program and definitely do not need you to go through item by item and try to match it.
Okay, good.
Glad to know that, you know, that they, that they seem to mesh pretty well. So thank you.
Yeah, just to let you know, I went through the checklist, and we've basically met a lot of them. And when you're reading them, you can see the board goals in them. So you really can. Nick Summer, you had a question?
No, I was just gonna say that I see a lot of alignment between this program and our board goals. And as a member of the Planning Commission, I'm particularly excited about it. So yeah, I would, I would love to move forward with this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, great. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Did Christine want to say anything?
Yeah, sure. I'll just, I'll jump in here really quick. Yeah, like I said, it's, or like Pat said, you know, I've worked on this with another community. And it's a pretty straightforward process, pretty easy to do. Yeah, sometimes, you know, the one to three-year commitment, it might be a little daunting to see one to three years. But with the right process and the right help, it can really be streamlined and it can be a lot quicker. So I'm ready to get started and excited. So yeah, and it's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I think I should have an RBA at the next meeting, right, to start the process?
It's actually on the agenda tonight, so I'm glad that you guys are all in, having positive feedbacks about it. But yes, the resolution to get started is actually on the agenda tonight.
Great, thank you. I just got so enthralled with the presentation there. All right, great. Our next item is a special hearing. So can I have a motion to begin to open the special hearing on the petition to appeal soliciting, canvassing, and peddling license denial? Chapter 54, Article 2, Section 54 through 33, through Tarlekin Gill.
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the appeals hearing to the denial of the 2021 license for Tarlekin Gill.
On April 16th, 2021, Tarlekin Gill submitted an application for a soliciting, canvassing, and peddling license for his ice cream truck business. License application was denied on April 30th, 2021 by the township clerk citing the applicant or activity license constitutes an apparent danger to the health, safety, and welfare to the people of the township. Public safety indicated that Mr. Gill had been stopped from Westland on March 19th, 2019 for speeding in a school zone. This coupled with two traffic violations in 2016, impeding traffic, failure to stop in the assured clearance distance prompted the recommendation for denial. So I have, I believe I promoted Mr. Gill. And then do we have someone, anyone else that needs to be promoted? No? Okay, so Mr. Gill, you have the first five minutes of the hearing to start, if you'd like to provide a statement. No, I see. I think I have one more. I'm sorry, Mr. Jajie also. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Jajie, are you speaking first or is Mr. Tarlekin? Hi, Mr. Tarlekin, you are muted. I don't know if Mr. Jajie is speaking. Jajie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Yes, I will be speaking on behalf of my dad as he doesn't speak English. So I briefly heard everything you were reading off that there was some citations in the past and that why the license was denied. So that has been happening for the last three years, right? So he would like to know what is it that he needs to do in order for him to be able to start getting his license back in the city again? As that is his only source of income. And that is his main profession that he does, you know, in the summer times.
Okay, did you want to speak anymore about? Anything else?
No, no, that's, that's all.
Okay, all right. So how about any board members? Michael, did you want to start about the process?
There was a excellent, I'm sorry. So just so everyone's aware, the way we conduct hearings for any review or for an appeal of a denial is similar to how the state of Michigan does it, which we provide five minutes for the appellate, the person who is appealing the decision. And then the township will have five minutes to kind of rebut the facts and circumstances. And then the appellate will have an additional five minutes. That's a process that gives a lot of deference to the, to the person who is appealing the denial. I, that's the process. So if Mr. Gill, either Mr. Gill would like to use that time later on, they can. We have Director Baugh. We also have Sergeant Adam Schulman, who is the individual from Public Safety who reviews applications. And he is here to present any of the facts and circumstances around the public safety recommendation for denial. You will see inside of your packet a number of traffic reports and individual police reports. And I don't know if Sergeant Schulman would like the floor to present anything. Could also answer any questions.
Yeah, I think it'd be important for Sergeant Schulman to provide some information because it's a little bit more complex. The board members may have a few questions. I know we're on a time limit here. So I'd like to defer to Sergeant Schulman to talk about why it is our responsibility to take a look at all the facts and circumstances, including not only the traffic issues, but some of the police reports and that we've been involved with and worked with Mr. Gill on. So if you would, Sergeant Schulman.
Yes, Chief, thank you. As Clerk Seacrest said, the process for solicitor permits goes through public safety, which they come to me to do a background check on the individual to make sure that they fall within the guidelines that are listed in the ordinance of the township, obviously, to make sure that our residents and the businesses are taken care of as well. So I go through a process where we check the driving records of the individual. As Madam Supervisor stated, the citations that were located. On top of that, also as Clerk Seacrest alluded to or said to, you guys have a packet with information in front of you with police reports, which were most likely redacted, I would assume. However, the three that I have in front of me are, one from 2014, where Mr. Gill was actually arraigned and charged with a malicious destruction of property charge in the 35th District Court for an incident with some young kids in the neighborhood where he had taken apart their grind box, whether it's skateboarding or rollerblading type device they were using and playing with in the street. And he was issued a citation and charged with that. It was ultimately dismissed later on at court. It just says that the prosecutor's motion, I don't know what the actual motion was. So that was one incident. And then in 2016, in July, there were allegations that Mr. Gill was at the splash pad at the summit and was taking photographs of a young male who was unclothed at the time. Officers had gone out to investigate the incident, talked to the witnesses who called us, talked to the family members of the young man, talked to Mr. Gill as well, who stated that he did take photos, but just from the waist up. And at the time, Detective Armaniak had written a search warrant to download the contents of Mr. Gill's phone, which he did do, but did not locate any images. But if they were deleted, per the report, it says that they would have been and then encrypted in an unallocated spacing, could not be recovered. So it was never proven, but we had multiple witnesses that stated that he was taking the photos of that individual. And then in 2000, also in 2016, in August, so just about a month after that, again, officers were dispatched to a location, Heritage Park, where again, Mr. Gill was seen taking photos of, of young children there. And the witnesses called us, finding it to be suspicious in nature. So he was, he was spoken to and investigated. Let us look at his phone. There was nothing inappropriate at that point in time. But based on all of the circumstances, the citations that Madam Supervisor had mentioned, these reports here is the reason that I denied the permit based on their denial reason within the township ordinance of if the applicant or activity license constitutes an apparent danger to the health, safety, and welfare to the people of the township. And that was my, my circumstances for making that decision.
If you would, I'd like to add, just, he's not been convicted of any crime, but he did cause this hearing. So this is why we're using the information there. It's publicly available to us. And that search warrant is a public document, which would have some of that information contained within to search that phone. So that's why we have the liberty to speak to that point.
Okay, thank you. Any, so any, okay, so Mr. Gill, would you like to speak to those? Five minutes at the process?
If I may. If I may, just briefly, so the ultimate determination for the, for a license comes through, through my office, the recommendation comes from Public Safety. We have traditionally made the, we have traditionally been consistent with Public Safety's recommendation for denial. And I think, given the, the police report from 2016, we felt it was, it was significant to, to continue to stay consistent with the recommendation for, for denial, which has brought us to this, this hearing. Now would be Mr. Gill's opportunity, if he would like to rebut any of the statements that were made.
Okay, so thank you all for those details as, you know, the denial application doesn't mention a lot of the information there. I want to speak on behalf of my dad here. 2014, the incident that you have reported that, you know, something that he took from the road. I believe he thought it was, somebody just tossed it sitting in trash. something that he took from the road, I believe he thought it was, uh, somebody just tossed it sitting in trash and I believe he picked it up, um, just, you know, uh, for, to see if he could use it somewhere, right? So after he found out that no, that was not somebody that just tossed out and the kids asked for it and he had returned it back, as I recall. Um, that's the, that's for that. Uh, additionally, for the two thousand sixteen, the splash pad and uh, you know, as, as you guys mentioned in July and then August, he was taking pictures. Um, I think, um, you know, as I recall it, those were just, um, you know, allegations that were, uh, made, but there was no hard evidence of anything as someone has asked him, hey, did you take a picture of anything? And, you know, he was, he did, uh, I will tell you that he was taking pictures of his workplace just to show families and friends in India that what kind of work he was doing. So those were the pictures, but it, it was not related to, uh, a, a small boy or a, um, you know, a, any, it, it wasn't in that kind of, uh, manner. It wasn't anything inappropriate that he was doing, right? So as he doesn't speak English, if somebody asks him a question, he may agree to it, say, yes, you know, I did this, but not from that manner, right? It was, um, he cooperated, um, you know, for all the times that, you know, uh, rather, it was in July, he cooperated, he didn't have to give his phone, but he did to, you know, uh, clear the misunderstanding that anyone may have had. And then additionally, in August, same thing I believe happened, somebody, um, you know, reported something. Um, you know, there was a report, he also complied there again, um, didn't make any, um, um, you know, didn't, didn't give any trouble to anybody. Uh, he cooperated there as well. It's just that there was a lot of misunderstandings, but I believe the, 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 the July and the August incident that he is getting denied for, it's, uh, it's unreasonable. And two thousand fourteen, um, incident, he agreed that yes, he took it, but once he found out it wasn't in the, uh, trash, then he gave it back, right? So based on those three incidents, he's been getting denied for the past three years. And if this continues to happen, we would like to know what is it that he needs to do in order for him to start getting his vendor license in, um, in this, in the city of Canton? But before I stop speaking here, I would like to, um, you know, check with my brother and my dad as they're sitting there. I want them to go on unmute and see if they have any questions from their side. Puchana daddy kohena no. Okay, um, it's basically, I just wanted to check with him if there were any additional questions from his side. So basically, you know, same thing as I said, um, you know, there were some the complaint that he said that was filed, uh, against him in July and August, I believe the, uh, the police department had reached out to the, um, to the complainant and there were no response from them, their side. So I don't know how, um, you know, that's still sticking to his record like that then. Okay, Tika. Yeah, so that, that's all from our side. Um, and he does want, uh, request you guys to, um, you know, review his case and then hopefully he can start getting his vendor license in City of Canton.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, um, Michael, go ahead. Put your hand up.
Just, um, wanted to, um, yeah, get my hand up there. But, um, we had a motion and a second to go into the public hearing. We never actually did the vote itself. Um, but that's superfluous at this point because we are currently in the hearing. Um, but I would ask that we do vote to move close and vote to close the, the hearing, uh, uh, at some point and then the board, um, deliberate. Um, I just wanted to get that in the process there. We, we never called the vote on that. Um, this is a Canton Township specific hearing, and so it's not like a public hearing for a zoning issue where that would be a huge ba- a huge issue because we're not complying with any state law. Um, you know, it's, it's merely our own internal process and if the board's comfortable, um, we don't need to solve that issue, but I just wanted to jump in with a quick procedural, um, because I am the, the rule stickler. Um, and since I have my hand up, am I, are you, are you okay if I go?
Yeah, first. Yep.
Um, and so I'll take my hat off as the individual who made the determination on the, the license and I will put my hat on as a trustee. You know, my, my first concern, I think, is for our police department, that the two thousand fourteen, um, charge of malicious, malicious destruction of property seems a little bit curious when I read the police report. Um, as I go through and I read that, it appears as though Mr. Gill sees a, a box in the street, pulls his car over, attempts to put it into his truck, after saying something to the kids who are sitting away from the box. Now, the box is in a public thoroughfare and as far as I'm concerned, that is not legal. Um, but that's a separate issue. When the kids tell him that they would like to keep that box, he then puts the box back on the street, leaves, they call the police. Um, the police come to his house, arrest him and charge him with malicious destruction of property. To, to me, that seems like a cultural thing, that he was unaware that that was a skating ramp or park. And, and I'm a little bit concerned at that level of service that we're providing, that somebody would be charged with malicious destruction of property for removing the handles in the street to, to, to something that was left in the street. Um, so I just, I, I, I see this on his report. To me, this doesn't seem like a very damning thing. To me, this makes me kind of question the officer and the workload that day, to be quite honest. Um, with regard to the two thousand sixteen report, um, the part that gets me and gets me every time is going to be on page five of the report or page twenty of my board packet where you've got a random individual who is not the parent who notices the photo being taken, notifies the parent who then comes over. And then, um, the parent grabs the phone, which is not something I would recommend somebody ever do. But it does say, um, let's see here, um, okay. Blank stated, blank saw the ice cream truck driver later identified as blank angle blank cellphone toward blank and appeared to take a video or picture. Blank got upset and grabbed blank phone. Blank looked at the video on blank phone and stated blank saw an image of blank penis on blank phone. Blank grabbed the phone back and said blank would delete the images. That exchange right there, which is corroborated by two individuals is a pretty damning exchange and um, I understand having standards for prosecution, right? Uh, probable cause is an important standard for whether or not you can violate somebody's, um, amendment, you know, rights under the, under the, under the, under the Bill of Rights. Now, can I search your property? Well, I need to have probable cause that a crime has occurred. Now, a conviction is a higher threshold, right, of proof? And that's important because you're taking away somebody's money through a fine or you're taking away somebody's freedom through incarceration. So you want to have a pretty high standard. You want to be, you know, you want to be, you, you want to be certain beyond a reasonable doubt that, um, the crime was committed and it was committed by the individual who's being accused. Uh, licensure for an ice cream truck is not a criminal prosecution. So for me, the standard of proof is much different. So whether or not, uh, obviously the prosecutor in two thousand fourteen, throughout the malicious destruction of property charge, my assumption is they probably felt similar to how I feel about that charge in two thousand fourteen. But a prosecutor also deemed that they could not charge in two thousand sixteen for a criminal act. Okay. Um, but for me, as a young parent, to have two individuals from the community corroborating that a photo was taken and to have it in a police report that the, somebody saw the photo on the phone, whether or not it was deleted and a forensic investigation of the phone later on turned up no evidence, fine, no prosecution. But we regulate solicitors because they go door to door and we regulate, um, ice cream trucks because they go out into our parks and they do go out into our neighborhoods and there's an intimacy there. So we regulate them through licensure because we want to make sure we know, um, who's out there and who is doing what. And so the nature of these allegations, severity of that, taking a photo of somebody else's child while they're in the nude and in public is, is pretty severe. And so for that matter, I'm fairly convinced for how I feel about, about, um, sticking with the recommendation of public safety. Uh, I can't speak to whether or not public safety will change their recommendation in future years. And, and, and I, I don't know what the, what the period of time is for something like that. Um, but I just can't think of any good reason to have a photo of somebody else's naked child on my phone.
Thanks. Anyone else on the board? Tanya?
Yeah, so, um, does the board get to deliberate on this after closing the public hearing? Or does it do it right now, just like Michael made some comments? And Michael was the one who, you know, was part of the life of the usual process, um, uh, along with public safety. But is the board going to deliberate on this after the closing of the public hearing?
So for the process, and Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I know there's a delay there. So we will, we can deliberate right now for five minutes and then they have five minute, minutes after us. We close the hearing and then we take. Okay.
No, so the township presented, or so, so Mr. Gill presented his case, the township presented their case, Mr. Gill presented his case again. Uh, so we are currently, we can ask questions, we can make statements, then we close the public hearing and then we make a motion depend, based on those tom- those, those statements that were made. This is not a, this is not, um, the public, a public hearing on, um, whether or not we should do a sidewalk repair program where we solely hear from the public. Um, so this is a hearing that's being done in public, whereas a public hearing is, um, where you would ask the public for their comments on whether or not, uh, you should, you know, change the master plan or whether or not you should, um, cha- you know, entertain sidewalk repair. And that's solely a venue for the public to comment. So same language, different process, um, is appropriate now to, to deliberate?
Did you have questions, Tanya?
Hope that answered.
No, I just wanted to make a comment on, um, kind of, um, agreeing along with, um, what Michael's line of thought was. Um, I think things that end about the skateboard, um, probably was a miscommunication, the language, and I think it was probably a little bit harsh, um, and, uh, that is the thing that I think as, as a person, um, of South Asian descent whose primary language, um, is not English, um, I think there is a lot of issues when, you know, when our, our parents or, uh, our seniors in our community who don't speak the language, um, there is a lot of miscommunication that happens. And, uh, uh, so I think of having a police complaint filed him arrested, that was, uh, a, a harsh, then, um, I think it was a main issue of not having a proper, it was, it was a case of miscommunication. Uh, so I agree with that and, uh, uh, about the, uh, issue of, uh, the splash pad. I, as a parent, um, am a little, um, very, and, uh, I'm a little concerned about the safety of the children in the community, even, you know, my, my child also has been on that splash pad. And, um, so that kind of worries me. Uh, so that is, that is a case on which I will base on these two issues, even though I can, um, not, I don't consider uh, the case about the, the skating board, um, to be, I, I think that case should probably be removed from any future hearings, uh, that will happen or I don't know how the public safety will consider it, but this, the, the one about the splash pad really is, um, the thing that, though, um, makes me have to decision.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Sorry, um, yeah, so I, I, um, tend to agree with both Clerk Seacrest and Trustee Ganguly. Um, I find the, the incident at the splash pad, the, the most concerning. Um, and since we're talking about, um, a license, a vending license or vendor license for an ice cream truck, which, um, as we all know, is a magnet for children, I, I think that's, um, the most concerning part about this for me. Um, also as a mother of, uh, an autistic child who's now an adult, um, I really feel for the family that, um, whose child was involved in the incident because, you know, as much as you try to teach your children, you can't predict what a kid is going to do when they're outside or, or even in your own house. And, um, I'm sure it was very upsetting for the family. And then to additionally have the concern that there might be a photograph of it. Um, so that, that really, you know, i- is a concern to me and I think should be a concern to, to everyone who cares about the children of our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steven?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with what's been said here. If it was just the incident with the skateboard ramp, I think that it would be something different to consider here, but it's not. And the nature of the incident and the nature of the business makes it to me, uh, something that I'm not sure, uh, to answer the question, what can be done that anything can ever be done to overcome this, except for the people sitting on this board changing, uh, in the future and deciding differently. But for right now, um, I can't see, um, approving this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so can I have a motion to close the appeals hearing?
Madam Supervisor, we make a motion that we close the appeals hearing.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Seacrest, please take a roll call on the motion.
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seacrest, I Slavens.
Hi.
And tonight, man.
Hi.
Thank you. Can I have a third motion read for the determination of the Board of Trustees upon the hearing?
Madam Supervisor. Madam Supervisor, I move that the determination of the Board of Trustees upon hearing all the evidence submitted and reviewing documents is to deny the appeal and uphold the clerk's denial, um, of the two thousand twenty-one license for Kerlock and Gill.
Right, right.
You, Clerk Seacrest, please take a roll call on the motion.
Hornenski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes to deny the appeal. Thank you for, thank you for attending. So the next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. Let me see.
Are we going to do a resolution at any time?
Pardon?
The Juneteenth resolution.
Oh, yes, you're right. You're right. Before we get to the consent calendar, thank you for reminding me. It wasn't large enough in my writing. So can I have a motion? We are, we do have a resolution that is going to be read by Ms. Summer Foster on Juneteenth.
Did I just start reading it?
Yes, thank you.
Um, resolution of Board of Trustees, Kent Township of Canton, Michigan, Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, commemorating June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth Independence Day in Canton Township in recognition of June 19th, 1865, the date on which slavery legally became to an end in the United States. Whereas the transatlantic slave trade system established both Europe and North America as world powers by and through the commoditization of Africans. Millions of Africans suffered disease and death on the eight week voyages across the Middle Passage. Whereas from 1619 through 1865, millions of Africans and their descendants were enslaved in the United States, the 13 American colonies and eventually the United States of America. Whereas maritime agricultural insurance, defense, tobacco, sugar and cotton industries were established off profits from the atrocities of slavery. Whereas Michigan served as the major hub of the Underground Railroad and home to several white abolitionists, including US Representative and US Senator Jacob Merrick Howard, Guy Buckley of Ann Arbor, Erastus Hussey of Battle Creek and Seymour Finney of Detroit. Whereas the work of these great men of all colors, the Second Baptist Church of Detroit, Friends of the Fugitive, Anti-Slavery Society and other institutions, thousands of slaves were freed. Whereas Canton historian David Curtis has invested more than 200 hours of research into the home located at 43425 Warren Road in Canton, which is believed to be the third oldest home in our community and a possible stop on the Underground Railroad and a refuge for runaway slaves on their way to Canada. Whereas effective January 1st, 1863, all persons held as slaves were free, were freed under the Emancipation Proclamation, in which word of this proclamation did not reach Texas until two and a half years later on June 19th, 1865. Following his statement, June 19th, Juneteenth became Emancipation Day for those long suffering for freedom. Whereas this tradition of celebration has remained strong into the 20th century to recognize the triumph of human spirit over the cruelty of slavery and to honor the strength, endurance and faith of African-American ancestors. Whereas slavery was abolished through the passage of the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution in 1865, after the end of the Civil War. Whereas the Canton Historical Society has identified 80 soldiers from Canton who served in the Michigan Infantry and Calvary Divisions in the Civil War. Whereas it is imperative that citizens across the state join together to acknowledge a time in our history that carried on the nation's ideals of equality and democracy and celebrate the joys of liberty and justice for every American citizen. And whereas in June 2005, Governor Jennifer Granholm signed legislation officially designating the third Saturday in June as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Michigan. And Senator Martha Scott sponsored a Senate Bill 384 to recognize Juneteenth as an official state holiday. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton commemorates June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth Independence Day and recognize the devastating legacy of an American slavery and encourage all residents to educate each other and future generations on the history of slavery in order to ensure this tragedy will never be forgotten or repeated and to celebrate African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equality and a strong sense of community in Canton Township.
Thank you, Trustee. Clerk Segrist, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Hornenski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Thank, thank you, Summer Foster. That was a good, that was a good resolution. Our next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider authorization to participate in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Item C2, consider award of a contract to Cadillac Asphalt for the 2021 Major Roads Asphalt Project for the 2021 Road Improvement Program and authorize a budget amendment. And item C3, consider an increase of $80,000 to the PO number listed for additional road work related to Fire Station Number Two Construction.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Hornenski.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is a general calendar. Our first item is, can I have a motion to vote on item G0A, request to purchase voter precinct laptop replacements?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment and for the purchase of replacement Dell laptops for use by the township clerk in the execution of election responsibilities of the state of Michigan negotiated price with Dell, $38,600.
Support.
Thank you. IT Services is seeking to replace the clerk's office voter precinct laptops, which Clerk Segrist graciously loaned to the organization in November of 2020 to aid in providing employees the ability to work from home during the township's second COVID-19 shutdown. The 45 laptops are scheduled for replacement in the first quarter of 2022, but continue to work well for the organization and employees. To continue to offer employees the flexibility of working from home and to ensure that the clerk's office is covered in the event an election is scheduled between now and quarter two of 2022, we would like to reschedule the replacement of election laptops to this year. How many questions or comments? Okay, great. Clerk Segrist, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Hornenski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is add on G0B. A request for resolution of local body of government to recognize partnership of the arts and humanities as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Bureau of State Lottery.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the resolution for the partnership of the arts and humanities at 355 North Canton Center Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187, to be recognized as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Support.
Thank you. The application to the Bureau of State Lottery requires the organization to get a resolution passed by the Canton Board of Trustees stating that the organization is recognized as a nonprofit in the community. Partnership for the Arts and Humanities, 355 North Canton Center Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187 is exempt from federal income tax under section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. This organization is in the process of making application to the Michigan Charitable Gaming Division for a gaming license. The organization is planning to hold an event whereas it intends to sell 50/50 raffle tickets. A resolution passed by the local body of government stating the organization is recognized as a nonprofit organization in the community is required. A copy of the required resolution is attached. Any questions or comments? All right, Clerk Segrist, please, oh, go ahead, Clerk Segrist.
So this is a natural consequence of the clerk on the board of a nonprofit. Also Deputy Leisure Services Director John LaFever, because they intended on planning a fundraiser that they were not licensed down to the state of Michigan to do. And so we decided that we would go through the very important process of making sure that everything was up to date. And I really appreciate Amy Houston, I appreciate the supervisor's office and everybody in my office that facilitated the express presentation of this to the board tonight. This was extremely fast. I am internally grateful for you all for your consideration tonight. And I think it'll be fun. Additionally, the partnership does have a Juneteenth celebration coming up, so please put that on your calendars.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Clerk Segrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Hornenski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, G1, consider award of CDBG housing rehabilitation contracts.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board, I apologize, you're going to have a technical delay and a PDF delay. Which is a natural consequence of being on this wifi, I'm using the VPN. That and Zoom is challenging, but I move to approve the two housing rehabilitation contracts to Optimus Contracting Solutions listed below totaling $40,000.
Support.
Thank you. Under Canton Supportable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for major and minor repairs to owner occupied single family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed and the public bid opening was held on April 8th, 2021 for the CDBG housing rehabilitation program. The bid results for the projects ready for the board approve are attached. Only one company submitted complete bids for the two projects. The finance and budget department is requesting to approve contracts for multiple HUD CDBG funded home rehabilitation projects that exceed the $10,000 purchasing threshold. Any questions or comments? Wendy, did you want to add anything?
Nothing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's, is this the only money allocated under this year's CDBG for housing improvements?
No, I, I don't have the exact dollar amount. I believe it's somewhere between around $100,000 that we allocate typically each year, 100 to 200,000 dollars. These are just the two projects that we're ready to get out in bid with the project scopes.
Great, great.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, Clerk Segrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Hornenski.
Aye.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, G2, consider approving a merit commission recommendation for a position reclassification in public safety.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the merit commission recommendation to reclassify the current grade five position of executive assistant, communication specialist, public safety to a grade six position of business operations coordinator, police and fire services.
Support.
Thank you. The police and fire departments are requesting the Board of Trustees approve a reclassification of the current grade five position of executive assistant, communication specialist, public safety to a grade six position of business operations coordinator, police and fire services. Merit commission unanimously approved this reclassification on May 17th, 2021, following the review of the new job description and factor analysis provided by Human Resources. If approved, this reclassification will be effective immediately. Chris or Chad, would you like to add anything?
I, I can speak. I believe this is long overdue. The position's really evolved for the employee in that position over the last decade. And it's been some years where she's been working in this, in this position. So we appreciate the board's approval and view of this.
Yeah, and I would just add that we couldn't do our job without her. So she's an important part of our process and
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, Clerk Segrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Hornenski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G3, consider approval of a purchase order increase for Preservation Park Pavilion construction.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an increase to the PO number listed in the amount of $8,994.50 to be paid from the account number listed, Capital Improvement Fund to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC, 18786 Susanna Livonia, Michigan, 48152 for the additional manhole and cross connection for the Preservation Park Pavilion.
Support.
Thank you. As the pavilion at Preservation Park neared completion, a few additions were necessary to complete the project. CLS staff were informed by the Township Engineering Department that a second manhole is required at the site located just south of the new grinder station near the Bartlett Travis House. This manhole was not part of the original scope and was amended, was added on during construction. The second manhole is an additional cost of $8,900. Additionally, a cross connection control system, which is necessary to prevent backflow, was purchased and installed at the site as well. This was not a budgeted item, but is necessary as a function of the additional manhole. The cross connection control system is an additional cost of $575. These additions were not included in the original budget amount of $332,465. Will need additional funds. Therefore, we are recommending a purchase order increase in the amount of $8,994.50 to be paid from the listed account to fund the additional manhole and cross connection that is required by the Township Engineering Department. Greg, did you have anything to add? Okay, any questions? Okay. Kate? Hope you're on mute. Sorry.
Sorry, that, um, I just was reviewing the numbers there and it says the man, the second manhole is $8,900 and the cross connection is 575. So I'm thinking that is 9,475, but the PO amount requested is less than that. So I'm wondering if there's a math issue.
There was $490 remaining on the PO from other contingency dollars.
Oh, I see that. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. A lot of information there.
Yep. Now, between reading it the first time and today, I forgot about that. Okay. So that answers that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, Clerk Segrist, please take a roll call on the motion.
Hornenski. Ganguly.
Aye.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item, G4, consider approval of a purchase order for Reliable Landscaping.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for Reliable Landscaping Incorporated at 8285 North Lilly Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187 in the amount of $52,895.25 to be paid from the following accounts. And I move to approve the attached budget adjustments.
Work.
Thank you. Reliable Landscaping provides many services for Canton Township. It's often called upon to help with urgent restoration of properties throughout the community. throughout the community as improvement projects are completed. These restoration projects are often required outside of the scope of larger projects and are not always included in project costs. Upon review of past projects and working with Reliable Landscaping Incorporated, it was determined that there were a number of outstanding invoices which have yet to be paid. In order to keep in good standing with this reputable company who continues to provide great service to Canton Township Leisure Services is requesting an approval of purchase order in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Greg, did you have anything to add?
Nothing further.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Werninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. Next item, G five, consider approval for two emergency purchase orders for the underground line service repair at Heritage Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an emergency purchase order to Corby Energy Services Incorporated, P O Box nine seventy Belleville, Michigan, four eight one one two, in the amount of two thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars for the generator service at the COVID testing site to be paid from the COVID fund account number listed and a second purchase order to Utilities Instrument Service at two two nine zero Bishop Circle East Dexter, Michigan, four eight one seven zero, sorry, four eight one three zero, in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred nine, eight hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents for the repair of underground service lines in Heritage Park, paid from the Community Improvement Fund attached.
Support. Thank you. On Friday, May seventh, twenty twenty-one, Facility Services was notified that the Parks Golf Maintenance Building was experiencing issues with their power. Upon investigation, Facility Services staff determined that two of the three legs were reading at seventy-five percent. Noticed that the COVID testing site was also experiencing power issues. Corby Energy Services Incorporated, a preferred contractor who was on site for the emergency generator final inspection at Fire One, was contacted immediately to investigate where they confirmed that the power was being interrupted. Corby supplied generators to temporarily get the power back running and then called Utilities Instrumentation Services to determine the cause of the issue. On May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, Corby Energy and U I S each submitted an invoice for their services totaling twenty-two thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Corby Energy Services, who provided generator service to power the COVID trailer, submitted an invoice in the amount of two thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and will be paid from the COVID fund account. U I S, a contractor who fixed the underground service line, submitted their invoice in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred twelve dollars forty-two cents and will be paid from the Community Improvement Fund. Invoices provided in attachment aid. Due to the urgency of this matter, a memo was sent to the supervisor and finance director requesting to waive the bidding process for the emergency repair. Upon their approval, the purchase orders were submitted. Greg, did you have anything to add?
Don't I have anything on this? Just a point of clarification on the previous R B A. Did we do both motions on that one? There's a budget amendment and a.
I remember both of them.
Did you? Okay, very good. Just wanted to make sure that that was covered. Yeah, nothing further.
I tend to do that.
Caught me off guard.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? All right, Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Werninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, that was the end of our general calendar. The next item on the agenda is public comments. So I'll go to the attendees, see if we have any further public comment. You can raise your hand or hit star six nine. Any public comment? I don't see any hands. Any other public comment? I don't see a public comment. Okay, great. Thank you. Does the board have anything, any comments or questions, or staff comments or questions on anything? So as we know, oh, go ahead, Jade.
No, I was just gonna let everybody know, on our leadership call this morning, I mentioned it, but our new D P W manager did start this week. He started on Monday. His name is John Salmy and he comes to us from Dearborn Heights and spent many years in Redford Township prior to that. But I will be bringing him around to, to meet everybody that's working in the admin building and hopefully to introduce you all to him very shortly on one of these meetings as well.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. Also, we've been getting a lot of questions. Go ahead, Michael.
Just wanted to let everybody know, the reason I'm up north in Lelandale County in the middle of the week with my family downstate is that last week I was elected to the Board of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. I had been appointed prior, but now it's official. I was elected. And so I'm up here serving. We are doing our leadership treat and the cost of the facility I'm at is being paid for out of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks budget, not the township's budget. So anybody watching at home, don't worry. This is not your taxpayer dollars paying for me to be up here, but we're gonna be working tonight, tomorrow, and Thursday, and I'll be coming back Thursday as well. But that's why I'm up here. I'm not on vacation. I am working and tomorrow will be a very long day.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Yes. So we've been receiving a lot of phone calls on the barn also regarding, as you know, the barn burned down. And Greg, you just want to give a status on what's happening with that? I mean, we're looking at removing some of the items, right, some of the debris right now.
Yeah, so the first thing that we're working on, or the, the next thing that we're working on, I guess, is one, establishing an electrical, electrical connection, reestablishing an electrical connection to Preservation Park Pavilion, the new pavilion that we just established out there, so we can make better use of that, as well as getting a report from a structural engineer on the silo to see if due to heat damage, that will need to be demolished as well. In all likelihood, it will, but we wanted a structural engineer to give us their review. We expect that review by the end of this week. And then as soon as that report comes in, we'll know if that needs to come down along with the barn and then we will get a, get moving with debris removal for all of that and then backfilling the crawl space there so that we can remove the fence and have it look a little bit nicer out there and then begin the process of deciding what's gonna happen there next.
Okay, and so basically, I think we had talked about, yes, we were getting a lot of inputs and we appreciate it, but it's just gonna take a while in terms of how we move through this. Okay, great. Any questions on the barn at all?
Are we still in, under investigation on that?
Chad, go ahead.
I can speak real, real generically. We have, we don't know for a fact that children are responsible. It's an accident. We have a few programming things here with the police department and with the fire department may be suitable to help provide some education to the children involved with that. And all the rest goes to our legal support afterwards. But it is true, the, it was an accident and children were involved and we've been working with the parents who've been more than often.
Good to know. Thanks, Chad. Any other questions?
No question, just a comment, but I'm thankful that no one was in the barn. I saw some of the pictures and they were frightening.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were.
I guess I'd also say that it's a historic, it's an historic structure for our community and it's sad that it's gone, but I know we'll, we'll do something to replace it in some appropriate fashion in the future.
Also, if I could just say real quick, recognize the quick response from our professional firefighters and public safety department to get out there and ensure that no further damage, even though the barn went up very quickly, none of the other structures were damaged in this fire and that could have spread very easily. So they did a great job of getting out there and addressing those concerns. So we certainly thank them for that so that we didn't have further damage.
Right, thank you. Michael?
And if I can just briefly, you know, the minute I heard it happened, I raced over there and I saw, you know, Director Holberger there. I know you don't live close to the township and so I think that speaks to your dedication that you came out. And so obviously, thanks to, to Chris's team and Chad's team for securing the location and for protecting our property, but also, you know, thank you for your dedication, Greg. That was a big hit to that facility and to the township.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Not about the barn, something else.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to apologize for missing our last board meeting. As my fellow board members know, I was called out of town because my mother has been very ill and she was in the hospital. Unfortunately, she is back in the hospital. Now, what I didn't know at the time was that I would might be in the hospital myself that evening and I suffered a pretty bad accident and I have a broken arm and I had a concussion. But I want to tell my fellow board members that I so appreciate all the messages and concern that you've shown me over the last two weeks and really appreciate your patience with me as I am recovering. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Kate. I'm glad you're better. Today is also trustee Foster's birthday. So we threatened to sing to her. Anybody wanna sing?
Not necessary, but thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, and this time I'm not gonna forget. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Thanks. Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Werninski.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Anne Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.